Everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance, and that will be led this evening by Alderman at Large, George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we love you so much, and we thank you that you give us the opportunity to be here. Lord, we pray for our children during this time when they've gone back to school, Lord Jesus. We pray that you would keep your hand over them and cover them. Lord, protect them and keep them away from any evil that would occur, Lord. Lord, we pray that you would be with us in our meeting today, Lord, and that you would give us wisdom to make good decisions. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is approval of minutes for the August 1, 23 meeting, and then two special meetings. One that occurred on August 3, and another that occurred on August the 9.
Shall we move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for a surplus of K-9. Mr. Nick Manley, City Attorney.
This resolution will surplus the K-9 named Ziggy for Lieutenant Chase Joyner. Ziggy's an eight-year-old Belgian.
Malinois.
What's that?
Malinois.
Malinois, yeah. I will take your word for it. He is K-9 that is now past the age where he needs to still be in service. So this will surplus the K-9 to Mr. Joyner in accordance with state law, and then Mr. Joyner has signed the release along with the documentation and insurance as required to release the K-9 to him. So I just need action from the mayor to sign this resolution so the K-9 can be surplus.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for IT surplus.
This will just surplus IT equipment in accordance with Mississippi Code 172525.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is an agreement in quote with Tyler Technologies for a financial cash management module.
This module or the software actually will allow the city to automate the bank statement reconciliation process. It will reduce the time spent on reconciling bank accounts. The software is actually integrated to the service, and the total cost will be $11,308, which is broken down for $4,108 for the service, I mean for the software as a service, and then the $7200 for the professional service with installation and management. We need authorization from Michael Norris to sign this agreement with Tyler, and so they can be approved, so this reconciliation process and agreement can be put into effect.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution to amend South Haven ordinance. Title 11. Chapter 3, Section 11 through 69.
Yeah, this amendment to the city ordinance is designed to address people who would be using the street or sidewalk or the driveway underneath the bridge for living accommodations, or setting up tents, or sleeping activities, or anyway, for preparations to sleep. It's not been an issue as so much in the city as it is more of an ordinance that will give us a mechanism in the event it does become an issue. So the ordinance makes that, defines the camping as set forth, that's prohibited in the certain areas within the city, along with the city right-of-way and city parks. And then it also does make exceptions, though, for construction projects which may be ongoing for the city that have to have people staying there, and it provides a mechanism to prohibit and/or prevent these activities. So this is what's being presented tonight. I know I presented it rather last week. If you have any questions, and we can discuss tonight or approve tonight, it's however the board wants to do, but the mayor requested this be on the agenda tonight for at least discussion and/or approval. So happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
I'll make that motion and go ahead and pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Alderman Jerome, second by Alderman Hoots, and I'll start the discussion. As Nick stated, we do not have a significant problem with homelessness in South Haven, but we have to pay attention to what's going on in our world. I mean, you know, when you hear things like the significance of the border crisis, and then, you know, you have the, all the things that are happening in Memphis as well. We got to understand that in metro cities that there's going to be a spillover effect, and again, with the border situation, there's going to be people eventually that are headed this way, and don't misunderstand this, media or anybody else. We're not being, you know, unsympathetic or uncaring to someone who may be having a tough time and is, you know, sleeping in a car, needs a, or is without a place to stay. We have mechanisms in place for that. I mean, we have a South Haven program. We have many, you know, people that are, you know, compassionate in this city, charitable organizations that want to help people in need, and we're going to be there for them. So like if we, if that comes about and we have someone in this city that's, you know, down on their luck temporarily, we're not just going to, you know, turn a blind eye to them. We're going to try to help them. But for the future of our city, we can't allow to happen what has happened in some of the larger metro cities in America. We can't allow that to happen. As you can see, it's gotten out of hand. It's become a drug issue for some cities, and we got to be proactive and not let that happen in South Haven. So that's why, you know, this was brought to my attention that we had, you know, one or two incidents of this, and then after doing some research and realizing that we really don't have a law on the books, that's why I felt like it was an urgent issue, and, you know, Nick did a lot of work on this for us and at my request, and we feel like we got a good ordinance in place. So that's how we got here so quickly today.
Quick question. Nick, and I heard you going through it, does this include someone sleeping or living in a car on a public street?
On a public street, it can, yes. If it's done for sleeping, and this ordinance really only affects public property and, you know, public rightaways, but to that point, if it's, it could affect that if the definition of camping isn't met within the ordinance. So can you answer your question? Yes.
It's very broad to include that, and, you know, the way it's written, it would include, you know, what you see in typical situations in large metro cities where you have people underneath interstate overpasses and in places like that. And then it is important to note that on private property in someone's driveway, if someone chooses for whatever reason to sleep in their car in their driveway, we can't, you know, we can't do anything about that. So this is in public areas. Any other discussion about this new ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Next on our agenda is an MOU with the Horn Lake Intercepter Sewer District, Horn Lake and DeSoto County.
Yeah, you may recall at the previous meeting, we entered into a sub-recipient agreement with the Horn Lake Creek Sewer District based on the board's previous action of providing $3 million, but it's ARCA money to the district for the storage tank, which would have to, this has nothing to do with the city of Memphis issue. This is separate stuff that would have to be done or items that would have to be completed even if that wasn't going on. So this is, that was for the storage tank. Well, as part of that sub-recipient agreement that was approved at last meeting, this MOU just notes that the, both entities, including the DeSoto County, Horn Lake, and the Horn Lake Creek Sewer District all worked together to abide by that sub-recipient agreement, and that all bid laws along with all federal regulations required for the money that the Horn Lake Creek Sewer District would be using will be followed as well. So that further memorializes the requirements set forth in the sub-recipient agreement that's already been approved. So tonight, we just need authorization for the mayor to sign this MOU with these entities, and it has been approved by the Horn Lake Creek Sewer District and DeSoto County as well, and back and forth revising language. I think we've got an agreement now that everybody can abide by.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Kelly, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. Will you approve that this resolution to clean private property is presented on this date?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any of the properties who would like to speak? Seeing or hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our planning agenda. Ms. Whitney Cook, our planning director.
I guess so. So we have, our first application is a subdivision application to further subdivide Lot 4 of the shops of Goodman Road, which is going to be that shopping center on the northwest corner of Goodman and Malone. What you see right now highlighted in red is what consists of Lot 4 now. The applicant is wanting to basically subdivide that in half, which is compliant with our commercial subdivision regulations. However, on the original proposed subdivision application, they provided a curb cut right there where you see the M dot right-of-way end, kind of where it juts down towards Goodman Road right there off that corner. We did ask them to remove that because it does not comply with our distance rules and the M dot permitting that we have been informed of by M dot. So we asked them to remove it. There is an ingress egress that is to the west of them that also has cross-access onto this lot. They did submit to us a revision to remove that. So we're asking for approval of the revised subdivision that removes the ingress egress access point onto Goodman Road.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve item number one on the planning agenda.
Second.
On item one, we have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our second application is a request to amend the text for the Whitfield PUD, which is going to be on both sides of Nail Road, all what you see highlighted right here in red. So it's between Elmore and Airways on both the north and south side of Nail Road. PUD has originally, was originally approved in 2006. You've seen little to no activity in that. Most of the PUD that was involved had car dealerships, heavy commercial, and things like that. Again, no movement there, so the owners of the property now wanted to take a fresh eye look to it, and it was recommended by my staff as well as supported by the bank that we look at a retirement-type development, retirement community, senior living, and all aspects of that. And we did have a recommendation from my staff to add some townhomes on the nine acres on the south side of Nail Road where it butts the Savannah Creek Apartments and the Gardens of, not Gardens of, Gardens of Plum Point duplexes. Planning Commission had a lengthy discussion on it. They did not like the non-age-restricted townhomes, so they asked those to be removed. They did approve for senior living in all its aspects for the remainder of the property with some contingencies that they wanted five amenities added during the site plan approval process, be it pools, pickleball, dog parks, whatever. And they also wanted it to be a gated access. The applicant did agree to that, and they did agree to remove the townhomes if it was the wishes of the board.
What do you, what do you plan on doing on the north side?
So, right now, it's just a marketing thing. There's no plan to do anything at this point.
I know that cuts into the commercial medical zone. That's why I'm asking that. I'm all for the, the senior living on the south side. I was just interested what was going on on the north side.
Right now, there's no plan. There's no plan at all, and I, the bank that owns this now is not looking into the medical cannabis and the, and the commercial medical type development over there. I think they found a niche. We've seen the senior developments, senior apartments and all that come through.
I think it's great.
Cuyahoga and Germantown. So it's a mixed product. We don't have.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was received very well. I think it would actually fit very well here.
Do you know how big of a, how many, you know, I guess, rooms or?
Anything that, like I said, this is just allowing the use in the PUD. So whatever comes, if somebody does take this and purchase it, they'll come back in front of us with a site plan that will show the densities and everything.
I'm kind of excited about, you know, something happening right there.
I think it will do great, and I think that it's way too much for commercial property, and like I said, it's close to the hospital, and it's an element of the age-restricted community we don't have, so, yes.
Place to put my mother-in-law.
Thinking about it.
I'm just saying. Just have a mobile home park.
You know they record this, right?
That's fine.
She may be watching right now.
That's fine.
No, he'd have heard by now.
No, that's fine. I don't mind saying what's on my mind. Y'all should know that by now. Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion to approve item number two on the planning agenda.
Second.
On item number two, we have a motion by Alderman Jerome, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
So our final application is a conditional use permit request for Lot 1 at the top of SIP subdivision, highlighted right there in red. You'll see it's across from our soccer field. It's actually under construction right now, and the architectural design of it has already come through the board. What they want to do in the north building is a full-service luxury salon and spa. It does fall into the guidelines for a half-mile radius rule, so we did a window survey of it. We did find that there's a full-service spa down at Malone and Goodman, but with the new rule that was amended by the board a few months back allowing for two in each half-mile distance area, this does comply with that, and it's recommended for approval for one year with a five-year extension.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve item number three on the planning agenda.
Second.
On item three, we have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report. A couple of things to update everyone quickly about. We talked about the Pepper Chase Road extension on the south side of Church Road a few years back when the Medline development was being recruited. The Mississippi Development Authority provided a grant of like $3.6 million, you know, to help Medline with have a secondary access to the, back to the south side, back to Highway 51. And then the county and city had matching funds of $250,000 each to make this project happen, went under construction. It was attractive to the city and to the county, not just because of, you know, the fantastic development with Medline, but also it connects to Pepper Chase that used the dead end just on the south side or the southeast side of the Lander Center. So we believe that this road will help us, especially help our police direct traffic at Lander Center events, and eventually it'll play a key role in relieving some of the traffic congestion at Church Road and I-55. So this, the good news is this road is done. It is now open, and so that will, again, will help us relieve some traffic there. Until, the ultimate solution, as we all know, is the interstate. I-55 needs to be widened. The Church Road interchange needs to be reworked right there, which will also widen Church Road. It'll put dual lanes in, you know, with the ramps, take out two of the left turns, which will make traffic flow there tremendously better. But until then, we're doing all that we can do to, you know, to fight, you know, a tough problem. So this, this project will, was very worthy, and it's going to be really good for us, and it's open now. The other thing, I was just going to give a general update. Y'all know we've been in budget discussions and talked a lot about that. We'll, you know, be approving a budget in the upcoming weeks. But I just want to point out, you know, publicly to the people watching, to our city, that, you know, the city of South Haven is not immune to the challenges that are facing our entire country with inflation. You know, when you look at the ongoing demands of our budget and the needs of our city, we're a very dynamic city. We're growing. We face new challenges every day. Things around us are changing in a hurry, and all around us. And so, you know, we've been, we've been able to, you know, hang in there over the years. We've been very successfully, been very successful economically. Our sales tax growth has been tremendous. We've had a lot of good things. However, inflation is becoming real in South Haven. You know, it's just all the things, you know, y'all have heard me say, the, the street resurfacing. We put a lot of money in our streets. The cost to repave streets now is about 40% higher, you know, than it was two years ago. And you go down the line, and you look at a, you know, our budget is around, with everything, all general fund and every other fund, it's about $100 million. When you go down through a $100 million budget and you look at inflation hitting every line, it has a big impact on a city. And I'm just doing that to preface everybody that, you know, we got to make financially sound decisions for this city, and there's never been a more challenging time to operate, operate this city as it is now with all the challenges. And anyway, just want to update everybody with that. You know, our city has been successful, but we got some challenges on the horizon, and we got to take care of those things financially, but just wanted everybody to be aware. I've used this example before, and I hope this makes sense to everyone. I thought a lot about this, how to, how to simplify this and explain it. Just, it's just simple math, but when we have, I mentioned all the budget lines that we have, when you go down through a $100 million budget, when there's inflation, for every dollar, that's, that's 100% cost us. So like if, you know, if we have an expense that goes up a dollar, we take 100% of that expense. We have to pay for that. On the flip side, you know, some people say, well, don't you also get the benefit of, of the increased sales tax revenue from inflation? And you do, however, they're not, it's, it's a very disparate comparison. When we make a sales tax dollar in the city of South Haven, it's, for a dollar, the Mississippi State sales tax is 7%. All right, of that 7%, only 18 and a half percent of that 7 goes back to the city. So if you do the math on that, for every dollar of inflation, we're only getting 1.3% of that. Whereas on the expense side, we're taking 100% of that. So that just kind of puts it in perspective of how tough it is, you know, from a city standpoint, not having the revenues to match the inflation that we're dealing with. But anyway, just enough of that. I just, I just felt like, you know, with all our budget discussions, it was important, you know, for everyone to know that. It's, you know, South Haven is not, we're blessed in so many ways because we do have a great economy, but it still doesn't take away the burdens that are being placed on us and the challenges. It's just, it's a, it's a tough situation out there. That's really all that I have this evening. I'm going to move on. Next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket as presented on this date.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update.
Just, first thing is, I mentioned earlier this, talk about the sub-recipient agreement we have with Horn Lake Creek Sewer District. That was approved last meeting. Since that meeting, it has been agreed to by the district as well, so just need to enter that into the minutes tonight. No action, just noting that's being entered into the minutes. And then also authorization for the mayor to sign amphitheater contracts, which have already been approved, but just giving that authorization to him, so I'm going to motion for that as well.
Shall we move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented on this date.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda are two claims dockets. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve claims docket number one in the amount of $2,887,685.52, including demand checks.
Second.
On docket one, we have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Please.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, is there a motion to approve docket two?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve docket number two in the amount of $18,986.40.
Second.
On docket two, we have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Eyes have it. The need this evening is pending and potential claims and litigation against the city police and parks in discussion in accordance with state law, as well as economic development within the city, and then interdepartmental personnel with no action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Eyes have it. Motion carries. The mayor and board will now enter executive session.